Greetings and welcome to everyone. I hereby call this special joint meeting to the City Council and Planning Commission to order. Madam Clerk, I ask that my letter dated September 3, 2020, calling for this special session be made part of the record.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, please conduct the roll call for both the City Council and Planning Commission.
Commissioner Barnes is absent. Commissioner Kostin. Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Horsley. Is absent. Oh, that's bad. Thank you. Commissioner Enman.
Here.
Commissioner Klein is absent. Commissioner Redmond is absent. Commissioner Wall.
Here.
Vice Chair Weiner.
Here.
Chair Oliver.
Here.
All excluding Commissioner Barnes, Horsley, and Klein are present. You want to do council? Thank you, I'm sorry.
Counsel, please.
Thank you. Commissioner, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci.
Present.
Councilmember Henley.
Present.
Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Moss.
Present.
Councilmember Rouse.
Present.
Councilmember Tower.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Wooton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Present.
Mayor, all Councilmembers present.
Thank you. At this point, can we please rise for the invocation and pledge that we're going to ask Louis Jones to do the invocation?
Dear Heavenly Father, we know that you are always near us and beside us in all that we do. We ask that you be with us this evening as we consider the affairs of this our great city. Grant unto us your care and your guidance as we consider all of our affairs. Give us the wisdom to decide and the courage to act. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Okay. Okay, I now call for a motion of the City Council to approve the special session minutes of September 1, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse. Sorry. Councilmember Mark, thank you. Councilmember Tower.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to 0, we've approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, thank you. I now turn the meeting over to Chair Oliver to call for a motion of the Planning Commission to approve the joint special session minutes of September 1, 2020.
I'm sorry to interrupt. If counsel could make sure all of your mics are off, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting, please?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Call for the vote. Commissioner Alcaraz.
Aye.
Commissioner Kostin.
Aye.
Abstaining.
Thank you. Commissioner Enman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wall.
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner.
Aye.
Chair Oliver. By a vote of 6 to 0, we've approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay. Okay. Okay, now I call for the motion of the City Council to approve the joint special session meetings of September 1, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember Tower.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to 0, we've approved the minutes as submitted.
Thank you. I want to again extend a special welcome and thank you to the members of the Planning Commission for being with us tonight. We will follow the same general procedure and order as the prior two joint meetings. Now, at this point, we're going to read the speaker policy. I want to remind everyone that the City Council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal portion of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. When speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to record. We have several items with only one speaker signed up. As such, the city clerk will call the speaker and identify each item they have registered on. The speaker will receive three minutes to comment on each item. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for us to strive for civility and respect. Okay, we will begin with the public hearing on the proposed, uh... Okay. We just got planning items today, correct? Okay. You know, with the planning items and, okay, we'll call the speakers now. We have two individuals.
Mayor, so we had two individuals sign up on multiple items. However, Jay Boone has not checked in with us, and I don't see her in attendance, so at this point, we only have one speaker signed up on every item, Barbara Messner.
Okay.
However, if Ms. Boone comes in, you let me know how we want to...
Yeah. If we can do the one speaker for now, and then we'll give the same courtesy if the other speaker comes.
Yes, sir. Barbara Messner, and she has signed up on each item tonight. Mayor, also, you received an email regarding item 16, Terry Chapman. They requested withdrawal of the item.
Item 16?
Yes.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might add, because that item was withdrawn prior to an effective hearing before the Planning Commission, there is no action to be taken by either body with respect to that, so you will not need to vote on that item, and you will not need to hold the public hearing on that item.
Okay, so it's eliminated, then. Okay, item 16, okay?
Ms. Messner, if you could come to the podium, and she has signed up to speak on every item. So item number one, Melissa and Paul Venable.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm sure you've received my correspondence, and I think there's several reasons, and this is my three minutes, or however for each one, that this is not due process to have a meeting the day after, the first day of school, the day after a holiday, and when the items are not, you know, it's only in the Beacon. I'll hold up the ad that ran for this. It was August 23rd and August 30th, and only about 50,000 people in the city read the Beacon, and they don't all know to look for the legal notices. This is like a half a centimeter. You need glasses and a magnifying glass to read this. And people can't go to the library, they can't go to City Hall to get copies like they did before. You have limited, we have limited access to government. So the first item, but before I forget, I want to get this in since I can speak on different items. It was almost impossible to get ready today because the full agenda was not printed or sent to certain people until Friday. This is a holiday weekend. And I heard some of the council members talking about wanting another retreat. I attended the retreat on February 1st and 2nd.
Excuse, Ms. Messner, with due respect.
Okay.
Is the planning item, please?
All right, but this affects the planning item. No one's here, and you're going to let somebody that isn't here show up late? I don't think that's fair. It's a lot of work to show up. Melissa and Paul Venable? Kevin and Elizabeth Baum? William Warnock? Alternative to existing nonconformality? So you're altering something that's already nonconforming to expand to a second story and add a new roof to an existing duplex. 213, 215, 69th Street, Lynn Haven, but it's really the Beach District also. And, you know, I listened to Ms. Henley's comments, you know, every single time since the beginning of time practically. It goes back to the first event house was built in the early 2000s, 2000, actually 2000. And there's been problems and lawsuits. What is the bell for?
Messner, that's the time for the first item. The next item that you signed up to speak for is Church of the Ascension, Roman Catholic Diocese of Richmond regarding modification of conditions.
Okay, and I appreciate you being here to fix the microphone issue. That was torture last week. Church of the Ascension, Roman Catholic Diocese of Richmond, modification of conditions. Ray builder, one-story administrative office, 4853 Princess Anne Road in the Kempsville We have too much growth. We have uncontrolled growth. That's the reason for the flooding, for the crime, and the traffic is atrocious. And speaking of traffic and parking, anywhere you allow additional businesses or growth, you have issues with parking. And on the holiday weekend, on Surfside, the cars are overflowing into the street. This is the 600 block, and they're even parking in the neighbor's yard and on their property because they're out of town. So there is, there's no one going around enforcing this. As Ms. Henley said, there's no enforcement. There shouldn't be any approval until you fix all the problems with short-term rental. There's no reason to have a special meeting for planning today. Planning should be separate. It's a separate entity. Item 3.
The next item is Linda Addison, conditional use permit for home-based wildlife rehab center in Centerville District.
This is Centerville District, which is where Mr. Dyer lives and Ms. Wooton is running in this district. Home-based wildlife rehab facility. There are way too many, short-term rentals, there's too many animals. The city just recycles them. It's a $90 billion industry. Some of these people, one of them that had eight dogs and blighted house, and he kept coming back, and y'all almost put that one through, but even if you don't approve it, just like two per bedroom instead of three, you don't have anyone to enforce it. So I oppose home-based wildlife. That should be in Princess Anne County, which used to be, that's where the animal control used to be, and they used to control the animals. It wasn't just, you know, move to the oceanfront. All right. And 4, Rachel Lena Reed. Johan V. Castro, conditional use permit, family daycare in the Kempsville District. There've been a lot of problems with some of these daycares, and I think you shouldn't be approving all of these when you don't have enough staff to go to all these homes. And the Health Department, there's been disasters with animals as well as kids and seniors. So I oppose approval of anything until you get your house in order, which is supposed to be our house and our government. So I oppose anything being approved today in these joint meetings. Everything's approval. If it's already approved, why is, why is planning here? Why, why don't y'all have all the information? Okay? Number 5.
Emmanuel B. Planton.
I can read them. We don't have to both read them, thank you.
My apologies.
But if there's anything pulled, I appreciate you telling me if something's pulled. Emmanuel B. Planton, Metro Holdings LLC, conditional use permit, automotive repair garage. I didn't have, let's see if I did. I didn't get all the pictures, but these, there's a lot of waste from auto repair shops. You approved one at Hilltop, and there's flooding. Where Kmart went out and Walmart went in, it's nonstop flooding. And, you know, there's oil spills, everything. So auto repair garage should be in strictly, well, Cleveland Street is industrial, but I just think, you know, until you can take care of the flooding and everything that seeps into the flooding. I told Ms. Henley, and I took pictures, there's one of the businesses that closed IHOP on General Booth next to the Chick-fil-A, there was sewage running out into their parking lot. There's no one checking on all these closed businesses. The Health Department is not taking care of everything, and I care about the quality of the waterways, and I care about, you know, what happens in the city. Okay, 6. And as I've said before, you would never know anyone's running except for the huge signs and the expensive TV ads because we don't know where any of the candidates stand on anything. I'm not a candidate. Okay, this is Lynn Haven, Mr., and that one was Bayside, Mr. Jones area. Lynn Haven is Mr. Woods area. Lorna Donatone, QPTR, and Scott and Catherine Marin, conditional use permit, community, community Like I said, I think it was 500 pages for this one. I didn't have time to watch the entire meeting or to look, but, you know, as I've said many times, we either do or don't have a pandemic, you want everybody to have flu shots, you close things, you open them, you close things, you open them. A community boat dock is, is going to be for more than two families and their company. So I'm in opposition. Number 7, Ink Credible Tattoo, Damnet Crossing. Conditional use permit, Tattoo Parlors, 1630 General Booth Boulevard, Princess Anne. Ms. Henley, you're just one vote, but you know what's going on in all these areas, and there are already tattoo parlors all over that corridor. Tattoo parlors, vape shops, the vape shop was open until 11:00 PM with two pool tables. I mean, it's selective, who stays open, who doesn't, who you enforce, who you don't. We never used to have tattoo parlors all over the beach. What y'all consider mainstream and what real conservative people with family values consider are different, at least I hope so. Number 9, HMC LLC, a lot of these are corporations, investment properties. Ming B.U.O.N.G. for conditional use permit, short-term rental. 4669 Merrimack Lane. Is, Mr. Tahan, is that, are the pictures of this property up on there for me to see? I should have asked before, but I... That's a picture, that's kind of blurry. Okay. And that's kind of blurry also. That's the best picture? Okay. I'll just have to ask Mr. Jones of the Bayside District if he had time to go out there and look at this property because, you know, whether there's room for parking or not, or whether somebody's going to enforce it or not, it's strangers in people's neighborhoods. And I oppose all of these, all of the short-term rentals. Okay, 10. Could I have the picture for that, Mr. Tahan? Is there an actual photograph of the property? The photo with the actual, the house and the driveway, that one, thank you. So this is the one, 304 28th Street, is that correct? No, which one? This is still Oak Street? Yeah, we're still on Oak Street, okay. Yeah, that's Shore Drive area, Lynn Haven, Mr. Woods. There are a few actual live oak trees over there. That's one of the best things to have for flood, trees and shrubs to keep from eroding. And when I went over to take pictures of the parking over here, I also noticed that somebody's paving their entire front yard for more parking. Yeah, Emily Purdonson and Dennis Smith, conditional use permit. So how many people on council and planning have actually viewed all the pictures and been out to the property and talked to the neighbors? Could anyone raise their hand if they've actually viewed all the pictures and been out to the property and asked any questions of the Planning Commission? I oppose for all the reasons that Ms. Henley stated, that Mr. Jones used to state, and Mr. Moss used to state. Okay? Onto 11, which is the Beach District, Mr. Tower, who I still don't have any, any email replies for any of my correspondence. Anyway, one thing that's been brought up with all of these is how people are notified in the neighborhood and how many. These postcards, I think you just have one, one person that does a notification for y'all, and it's a little postcard. And you use this postcard to notify everyone in the city, every address that they have for any purposes about COVID. You know, why isn't everyone that's affected by short-term rentals, traffic, crime, flooding? Why aren't they, why aren't we all notified? 304 28th Street, two units, 310 and 211. So that's 28th Street. Is that the old hotel? Is that one of the old hotels that Mr. Richardson used to own near Harris Teeter? Anyway, the flooding has been horrific there ever since the Harris Teeter was built on wetlands. The flooding, I've held up pictures to show y'all, you know, the crumbling sidewalks and the crumbling roads with major infrastructure problems. We don't need to add short-term rentals to the Beach District. So I'm in opposition. And no one raised their hand, so I assume no one asked any questions or went out to the property. 12. This is also Beach, Mr. Tower's District. Alan Prince, that name sounds familiar for some reason. Conditional use permit, short-term rentals, 525 21st Street, Unit A and B. Ever since the Breeden project went on top of their 25th Street municipal parking lot, there's been issues with parking. You take away parking. And 21st, 22nd, and 25th is parking by permit for people who live there, not for people who live in the rest of the city that want to go to the beach. So you're building all these high-density projects and adding to the ones that already exist for investment properties. You're making it impossible for anyone to have affordable housing. And then you want affordable housing for select people? That's discrimination. Everyone deserves affordable housing. It's quiet as a mouse in here.
Next item is 13, Mission Enterprises LLC.
I've got, thank you. I'm just making comments. Mission Enterprises LLC, like I said, if I had time and if the PDF was user-friendly and we could open it and not have to look over to the left and click each one and print out each one, I think even this was 500 pages with these few items. So Beach District again, Mr. Tower, cha-ching. Okay. Short-term rental, 517 Virginia Beach Boulevard. Yeah, is that the picture of it, Mr. Tahan? I've done a little bit of photography. These are not clear pictures when they're blown up. You can barely see it. Is there anything closer? No, I mean, an actual picture that's closer so we can see what the house looks like, because one of them that was closer, I don't know if it was Mr. Wood or Mr., I think it was Mr. Wood, noticed that the cars would back up to a chimney. So that's the closest, that teeny little house in the middle, that teeny little structure in the middle? So Unit A and B and that teeny little thing, how many square feet is that? So Unit A and B and that teeny little thing, how many square feet is that?
Ms. Messner, are you ready for the next item?
I'm waiting for the information. If y'all ask a question, um, we have to wait. If I ask a question, we don't have to wait. That's discrimination. That's not fair. I have a right to ask, and everyone on council should be asking what the square footage is for Unit A and B.
Yeah, Mr. Tahan?
A lot of tellers that it's got to be a big building.
But like 500 square feet, 400 square feet, whatever, relatively small. Yes, you can tell from looking at it, it's, it's teeny.
Mr. Mayor, as a point of order, is it customary for speakers to ask questions of staff?
No, you know, Ms. Messner, you gotta stick to the thing. Please do not, you know, you'll stick to the subject at hand, please. You know, that's my fault. I try to be accommodating, but please.
I have a right to this information, and Mr. Berlucci, who's running, and who seem to be care about some of the short-term rentals, you could ask him for me if you really cared about six and a half.
Okay, thank you. Move on to the next one, please.
And I disagree with your, uh, your ruling.
The next item is number 14, Janet Moreno.
Okay, Beach District, Mr. Tower, short-term rental, um, Maryland Avenue, that's the Shadow Lawn area. And if y'all remember, there were a lot of people that came here in opposing the short-term rentals in that area. We went back and forth for a while, but you stopped one. So, um, so that's the, the property, is that a duplex? It looks like a duplex. Uh, short-term rental, 517, wait, wait, 951 Maryland Avenue. So it looks like a townhouse, so unless they own both of them, that's, that's pretty close to all the neighbors. And, uh, I don't think there should be strangers that aren't vetted, or they're vetted by, investors to be moving into the neighborhoods. Okay, opposition. It's there for approval. 15, Erica and Melvin Atkins III, conditional use permit, short-term rentals, 598 Pinewood Drive, that's Beach District again, okay? Could I have the actual photo? Thank you. And none of the applicants are here, I assume, in any form? So that looks... That looks like a hotel, an old hotel, that doesn't look like a residence. Anyway, uh, I oppose because it's additional, short-term rentals in the Beach District. And at the last count, it was 2,600, and unless two people, um, propose a moratorium on these, it's going to be never-ending. There will be nothing left of a residential neighborhood, I oppose. Okay?
That's all the items.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Messner.
There's one more, 16.
No, ma'am.
Uh, that one was withdrawn.
That was pooled, but...
Yes, that was withdrawn.
Okay, but we can, if it's on the agenda...
It's been withdrawn.
We still have a...
It's not on the agenda. It's no longer on the agenda.
It's right there. The printed agenda is what we go by.
With due respect, Ms. Messner, prior to this, we indicated that that item was withdrawn. Thank you very much.
Okay, I still have my three minutes?
No.
No, no, ma'am.
All right, y'all fix the rules, change the rules, and violate the rules. But I do appreciate your help tonight, Mr. Tahan.
Mayor, the other individual, Ms. Jay Boone, I see, has arrived, and she has signed up on items nine through 15. Yes, sir.
We will extend the same courtesy that Ms. Messner had to come forward and, uh...
Ms. Boone, if you'd like to step to the lectern and then make comments, you'll have three minutes each, ma'am. Thank you. And if you'll just sort of indicate when you're moving on to the next item, or I can help you through it, either way you'd want me to do. Uh, yes, number nine is the first item you signed up for is HMC LLC regarding a short-term rental in the Bayside District.
Well, all of them, I'm going to say I'm going to approve or go with. I don't think it's right for us to penalize, you know, citizens for, for leadership. You know, I do have concerns about COVID, and I have concerns about other things as well. But as citizens, I feel like they should have a chance and opportunity to make money as well and a living, so this one is in Bayside.
Ms. Boone, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I don't mean to be rude, but with your mask on, it's difficult to hear.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you hear better now?
Yeah, I think you would be, yeah.
So we actually cleaned the podium and the microphone after the last speaker, so it's probably a little easier to understand what you're saying if you pull it down to the side.
Okay, that's fine, can you hear though?
That's better, yes, ma'am, thank you.
What I was saying is that, um, I would actually approve, you know, all of these short-term rentals. I don't feel like it's right to penalize citizens, um, for poor leadership. Um, I have concerns as well about COVID and about different things like that, but as citizens, I feel like they have the right to, you know, make a living as well. And if you guys are not going to make guidelines to, you know, guide that, then that's fine, that's not on them. So the Bayside one, that's fine. What's the next one?
The next item you signed up on is number 10, Emily Perdonson regarding a short-term rental, um, in the Lynn Haven District.
Yeah, that's, that one's, I, you know, I agree with that one as well. I don't think, um, they should be penalized as well. Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So the next item is Vacation Properties LLC regarding a conditional use permit and short-term rental on 28th Street at the Beach District.
Okay, yeah, um, the, all the ones at the oceanfront especially, I would like to, you know, say that I would approve. When something in the water happened, there was a lot of issues with people, um, you know, they had reservations at hotels, I had people that I knew that had weddings going on that got canceled because they wanted to clear space for tourists coming in and hike up prices. And so I feel like we need to have citizens that will be able to rent out their homes and kind of spread their wealth out, since we're not going to spread it out to other cities. They should be able to, you know, get a piece of the pie as well. Go ahead.
The next item, ma'am, is number 12, Alan Prince for a short-term rental on 21st Street at the Beach District.
Same thing stands with all the Beach ones as well. I just feel like they should have an opportunity to, um, you know, get some of the money that's coming into Virginia Beach Oceanfront.
The next item is also at the Beach District regarding a short-term rental, Mission Enterprises LLC.
Yeah, I agree with that one. Some of the major concerns just for me, I think, would be some beyond major streets, but I mean, again, that's not a concern of theirs, I feel like. Go ahead, the next one.
Yes, ma'am, Janet Moreno, it's a short-term rental as well in the Beach District on Maryland Avenue.
Yeah, that's fine, that's the one off Birdneck, right? Like, close to Birdneck or something?
And then the last item is Erica and Melvin Atkins III for a short-term rental in Pinewood Drive, which again is the Beach District.
Yeah, I agree, they should be able to rent out their home or rent out whatever property they have. You know, they should have a right to do that. And I hope that, I hope that there are guidelines that come to play. I hope that you guys do have, you know, actual meetings to guide these. I think we've made, um, concerns heard. I think that even Ms. Henley has brought up the fact that you guys don't really have certain standards in play. But again, I don't think that citizens should have to pay that price. Next one.
Ma'am, that's all the items, because number 16 was actually withdrawn prior to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming to speak, appreciate it.
Mayor, that's, that's all the speakers.
Okay, great. At this point, Mr. Tahan, please come and identify other items that may require separate
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council and Planning Commission. Just for a note of record, these items were previously heard by the City Council on July 21st and July 28th. Each of the short-term rental items, the, uh, the council imposed the condition which required the calculation of two per bedroom and one per, uh, one rental per week, which they agreed to at that hearing. And we still have that as being what they still agree to at this point. So we, there's nothing to, to be heard separately, so.
Okay, thank you. At this point, does any member of either body wish to pull any items off the consent
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question of Mr. Tahan?
Yes.
Before I answer that. Mr. Tahan, um, my only question was the letters of opposition to the Atkins property on Pinewood Drive?
Yes, sir.
I, I frankly don't recall seeing those letters. I'm sure it was my oversight in the first go-round, and I don't want to relitigate it, but the question that I have for you is, there's a claim in at least one of them that this violates the Homeowners Association rules for that unit. Do I have the right one?
Yes, sir, that's correct, that's what they stated.
And it, do you have an opinion as to whether that's true or not?
Mr. Styles, the chairman.
I don't, Mr. Tower, I don't know whether it is true or not. We have always consistently advised that, uh, those are private rights that are unrelated to the zoning approval, and that, uh, the enforcement of those rights should not be through the zoning process, but should be pursued civilly by the, the parties who have the right to enforce those restrictions. We have taken that position in connection with numerous items, including, uh, the Navy purchased easements, uh, under the AQ's ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Styles. I have another question, Mr. Tahan. Is it true that you inquire typically of the, ask people in community associations to produce a letter from the president of the association saying that it's permitted?
If it is a condominium association of more than four, we do require some legal represent, or representation from a member of the board to say that they are permitted. They sign on the application, similar to the disclosure. If it is a condominium of four or less, we require them to have the signature of the adjoining property owners.
So where does this fit in that?
I believe we received a sign-off from the president of the Homeowners Association at the time of the acceptance of the application. Yes, sir.
Okay. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Styles, but I, I hesitate to act on them if there is, people are unclear about it. I'm not saying how I might vote on them ultimately, but, um, I do think it's instructive to know whether or not they are approved. I don't want to be a part of encouraging people to violate their homeowners unless I've kind of got my back to the wall on it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to follow up, because I, I do align with the position of the city attorney, and I think their recourse, to the extent that someone signed off on that and did not represent the best interest of the homeowners, they had a fiduciary responsibility to do so. Their civil action would be against the person that signed it, that created an economic injury that you didn't account for. That's civil litigation, not for us on this board. I do think Mr. Stiles is right, and I don't know to what extent we should be protecting that rather than having the homeowners take the appropriate action against the person that acted in such a way that was deleterious to their financial condition.
Okay. Anybody want to withdraw anything? At this point, we'll turn the meeting over to Chair Oliver for the Planning Commission's consideration of its consent, uh, items.
At this time, we're going to address those that we have placed on the consent agenda, and our vice chair, David Weiner, will handle this portion of our night.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move for approval on the Planning Commission, um, items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, A and B, 12, A and B, 13, 14, 15, A and B. Madam Chair.
Second. The second by Commissioner Wall. Call for the question.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have, have to abstain from the item that was just discussed about the condominium, as I, my firm represents that association, and I would have a conflict of interest in voting on that.
Okay, anybody else? No? Thank you. Madam Clerk, we'll call for the question, please.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Alvarez?
Aye.
Commissioner Tolston?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Edman?
Aye.
Commissioner Wall? Commissioner Weiner?
Aye.
Chair Oliver?
Aye.
By vote of seven to zero, noting Mr. Edman's abstention on item 15 A and B, you have approved, consent agenda is read by Vice Mayor Weiner. Vice Chair, I apologize.
Okay, thank you. At this point, Mr. Vice Mayor, I turn it over to you for our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does any member of council want to vote no on any items? I would note that, uh, items nine through 15 are short-term rentals, it appears. There were some nay votes on some of them, but not all of them. So does anybody want to vote no on any item? Ms. Henley? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval on the consent agenda, the following items. Uh, item one, Melissa and Paul Venable, Kevin and Elizabeth Baum, and William Warnock for an alteration duplex, alteration of existing non-conformity, Ray expands second-story and add a new roof to an existing duplex of 213 and 215A, 69th Street in Lynn Haven District, item two, Church of the Ascension, the Roman Catholic Diocese of Richmond for modification of conditions regarding build a one-story administration office at 4853 Princess Anne Road in the Kempesville District. Item three, Linda M. Addison for conditional use permit, Ray Home Based Wildlife Rehab Facility at 1717 Dancers Court in Centerville District. Item four, Rich A. Linay Reed and Joaquin V. Castro for a conditional use permit, Ray Family Daycare Home at 1674 Dillon Drive in the Kempesville District. Item five, Emmanuel B. Platon and Metro Holdings LLC for a conditional use permit, Ray Automotive Repair Garage at 5044 Cleveland Street in the Bayside District. Item six, Lorna C. Donatone QPRT and Scott and Catherine Moran for a conditional use permit, Ray Community Boat Dock at 1421 and 1423 Blue Heron Road, Lynn Haven District. Item seven, Incredible Tattoo LLC, Damnet Crossing LLC for conditional use permit, Ray Tattoo Parlour 1630 General Booth Boulevard, Suite 112 in the Princess Anne District. Item eight, Vogue Lashes and Spa, Alaskan Road LLC for conditional use permit, Ray Tattoo Parlour at 993 Alaskan Road in the Beach District. Item nine, HMC LLC and Men Vuong for conditional, for conditional use permit, Ray Short-Term Rental at 4669 Merrimack Lane in the Bayside District, noting Ms. Henley's voting nay. Item 10, Emily Perdonson and Dennis Smith for a conditional use permit, Ray Short-Term Rental at 2306 Oak Street, Lynn Haven District, noting Ms. Henley's voting nay. Item 11, Vacation Properties LLC, Sean and Tijuana Bell for conditional use permits, Ray Short-Term Rentals at 304 28th Street, A, Unit 310, B, Unit 311, noting that Ms. Henley is voting nay on that item. Item 12, Alan Prince for conditional use permit, Ray Short-Term Rentals at 525 21st Street, A, Unit A, B, Unit B in the Beach District, noting Ms. Henley's voting nay. Item 13, Mission Enterprises LLC for conditional use... Item 13, Mission Enterprises LLC for conditional use permit, Ray Short-Term Rental at 517 Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Beach District, noting Ms. Henley is voting nay. Item 14, Janet Moreno for conditional use permit, Ray Short-Term Rental, 951 Maryland Avenue, the Beach District, noting Ms. Henley is voting nay. Item 15, Erica and Melvin L. Atkins III for conditional use permits, Ray Short-Term Rentals at 598 Pinewood Drive, A, Unit 203, B, Unit 208, in the Beach District, noting Ms. Henley is voting nay. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
We have a mo... Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye, as read.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to zero, noting Ms. Henley's... um... nay votes for items nine through 15, you have approved the condition... consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, the appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I make the following nominations to the Bayfront Advisory Commission, Charles Guthrie, to the Housing Advisory Board, Thomas C. McKee, representing multifamily home builder, to the Human Rights Commission, Zakiya K. Anderson, to the Public Library Board, Ellen E. Venikoff.
Okay. The vote is open.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to zero, you have appointed those as nominated by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, thank you, and I'd like to make a mayor's appointment of council. Lady Henley and, uh... Mr. Rouse are gonna be heading up, uh... infill development policy, you know, just to work on it, and we thank you both for, you know, being willing to do that. Okay? All right. Any unfinished business? Any new business? On behalf of the council, we would like to thank the Planning Commission for working with us and, you know, getting us through a tough time. It, you know, it was a challenge, but it was enjoyable working. Thank you. We are adjourned, okay?